... 2011, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, Jan. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Birchell.
Here.
District One, Morsette.
Here.
District Two, Yakub.
Here.
District Three, Bernard.
Here.
District Four, Wyland, and District Five, O'Malley, are excused. District Six, Vanslow.
Okay, at this point in the agenda, we'll take comments, suggestions from the citizens present who would like to speak to the council concerning anything that is not on our agenda. Is there any citizens? Laura, you'd state your name and address, please.
Laura Gray, 1015 Second Street, Proview Apartments. Anyhow, the reason I'm here is because getting out of our parking lot right now is terrible. The other morning, I had to wait at least ten to fifteen minutes to get out. Thank God somebody stopped. But somebody's gonna get killed there. I talked to Marty about it and asked if he could put one of those speed they come through there like a bat out of heck, speed signs, maybe slow them down, or have patrolled. I know they're short on police force, but maybe we can have somebody kind of be around there at the time. So, I don't know what you can do. I'm gonna talk to Jody and see if they can't get a right away going through the alley from our parking lot and see if they'll do that. And that would save us a lot. We could go out between First Second, First Street and Second Street and go down First Street. So, we'll see what happens. But anyhow, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay. Madam Clerk, the consent agenda.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of March 28, 2011, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $312,563.27. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of three regular operators licenses for the period April 12, 2011, to June 30, 2012, and the renewal and issuance of four regular operators licenses for the period July 1, 2011, to June 30, 2013. Additional information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To award the contract for the 2011 Spring and Fall Leaf Collection Program to River City disposal as proposed. To approve increasing the Sangkara EMS base billing rates by $100 in each category resulting in the following new rates. BLS Resident, $1,025. BLS Non-Resident, $1,075. ALS Resident, $1,100. ALS Non-Resident, $1,175. ALS Two Resident, $1,350. ALS Two Non-Resident, $1,350. And to increase the mileage from $15 to $18 per loaded mile. To place on file the quarterly reports of the Sangkara EMS Chief, Police Chief, and Fire Chief and the Community Access Board minutes of March 29, 2011, and the Public Utility Commission minutes of April 5, 2011. And that is all.
Consent agenda item on the Plan Commission, was that polled? I had it as a consent agenda item.
I have that as a consent agenda item.
I don't believe that was read, was it?
That was not read, and it wasn't listed on our issue sheet, but it is on the agenda.
Right, as a consent item.
Yep, so also.
Also.
To approve the amendment to the Zoning Code, Section 255-48, Off-Street Parking Requirements to reduce the fee amount per stall for the payment in lieu of required off-street parking, allow fees for the payment in lieu of required off-street parking and to be requested to be assessed and to reduce the standard for the required off-street parking for restaurants in the B3 Central Business District Downtown Commercial Area.
I'll move for approval. Is there a second?
Just to schedule the public hearing.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Oh, to schedule the public hearing for Monday, May 16, 2011, at 6:50 PM.
I'll second it. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Morsette.
Yes.
Lo.
Aye.
Bernard.
Yes.
Yakub.
Yes.
Okay. Item six, Resolution Number 6-10, to authorize Ellers and Associates to solicit proposals for the issuance and sale of approximately 3.5 million dollars in promissory notes, Series 211.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm Sean Lentz with Ellers and Associates. And I hope, and I believe everyone's got the pre-sale report. Great. I will go through this and give a summary of this report, as I do, so feel free to interrupt me with any questions as we move through. The proposed financing includes two portions. First off, it includes capital projects related to 2011 and '12. And then secondarily, it includes a refinancing and restructuring of the 2005 general obligation promissory notes that are currently outstanding. If you turn to the third page, I'll just briefly take through, the council through the proposed timeline. Today would be step one, where the council would review the finance plan. From there, a couple of things will go on if the council wishes to proceed. First would be, we'll continue working with city staff on the production of an official statement or prospectus for the sale of the debt. And secondarily, we will work with Moody's Investor Service, who is the rating agency that rates the city. The bond rating is a very important part of the issuance of the debt, and the City of Hudson is currently rated AA2. The very best rating is AAA. AA1 is one step down from that, and AA2 is where Hudson is currently rated. It's really a very strong rating for the city and represents a lot of hard work over the years. The city is, I think, going back to the early 90s, was a low A or even a non-rated community at that time. So, that's a real positive and really helps in getting the lowest interest rates available. What we would propose, then, is at your meeting on May 2, the official statement will be put out and competitive bids would be taken on that date, and that would be the day where you'd have a proposal before the council to take final action on. So, from there, I'd like to detail what the financing is looking like. If you go to Exhibit Number One, this handout, the proposed general obligation promissory notes will total $3,530,000. And it's expected to have a 10-year full amortization, fully paid off in 2021. And the expected total principal and interest payment is projected in the range of $415,000 to $420,000 a year in principal and interest. The interest rates you see there are fairly conservative, given where we're at right now. They're about a half of 1% above a recent sale for a similarly rated community, another AA2 rated community. So, this is what we're expecting the issue to look like for sale on May 2. If you go over to Exhibit Two, I did want to update the council on the, where you sit as a city right now for borrowing capacity. This issue will be a general obligation issue, so it's backed by the full faith and credit of the City of Hudson. The state does limit how much general obligation debt the city can issue. The limit is 5% of the total valuation of the city. So, total valuation is just under $1.5 billion. Your borrowing capacity is about $72 million. And approximately, the city with this issue will have around $10 million outstanding. So, you can see, pretty, very conservative use of general obligation debt. And you may recall from a couple of years ago when your tax increment district closed, the large tax increment district the city had, a number of debt issues were paid off at that time, which also helped to keep the amount of total general obligation debt outstanding at this level. So, this is, this is just to give a sense as to where you sit now. Certainly, plenty of capacity remaining and not something that I would think is a concern at all for the city. If we go over to Exhibit Three, the second item I'd like to review at the council with this proposed new issuance is where we're projecting the general obligation debt service levy will be going forward. And what you see on Exhibit Three, the blue bars represent the existing scheduled principal and interest payment that the city has, exclusive of that 2005 issue. That 2005 issue and the proposed capital projects are represented in the green bar. So, if you look from 2011 to 2012 and forward, the amount that you included in the budget this year for principal and interest payments is expected to stay at approximately that same level with this new financing out to 2018. And then, as the city's debt is currently set up, with no additional debt, just what you have outstanding right now, all debt would be paid off by 2021, all your general obligation debt by 2021. We did include one other additional exhibit, and this one is more forward-looking. And it does, it does include a couple of assumptions, but just more for planning purposes, wanted the council to have this and begin to think about it. What we did for this hypothetical is, we added two additional 10-year note issues like we're proposing this year in the amount of $2 million, one issued in 2013 and one issued in 2015. So, point being that if we do add those issues with no other alterations to the city's existing debt, we would expect that there would be some need to increase that levy in 2014 and 2016 at the time that additional levies for those preliminary $2 million issues would come online. So, just more to give the council a sense as to if there is additional debt coming down the line, the impact that it might have on the total debt levy for the, for the city. Just to summarize, then, what would be requested of the council tonight is authorization to proceed and to bring back for your review on that May 2 date, competitive proposals for the financing in the amount of $3,530,000. But if there's any additional questions prior to looking at the resolution, which is on the fourth page of the handout, be happy to answer any of those. Questions?
Why are we refinancing the 2005 promissory notes? What's the reason for refinancing?
Yep. If you go back to Exhibit Three, the interest rates on the 2005 issue are higher than current existing rates, so that's part of the purpose. The other purpose is, what we're looking at doing is, again, trying to maintain that overall levy for principal and interest on the total debt service that the city has for all of the debt. So, it's a combination of those, those two reasons that that issue is included.
Okay. I'll move to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morsette.
Yes.
Vanslow.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Yakub.
Yes.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 6-11.
Any other discussion?
Recently, and in the past, I know we've done this, we've looked at different scenarios where we have different borrowing plans and we could certainly borrow less than the $2 million in '13 and 2015, come up with a different structure.
Sure. I think the reason we did that is we depended on a million dollar a year for about the last three or four years for capital expenditures. And I wanted, we wanted to just show you what would happen if we didn't. Obviously, we do not have to borrow any of that dollar amount if we didn't want to. But I think we had to be aware that it continued on. I know we're gonna have some other street projects that are gonna be coming up, so. Any other questions? Good point, Laurie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, review proposals and consider awarding contract for the 2011 lawn mowing services. Mr. Zulie.
We received six quotes for the mowing contract services for 2011. Low bid was Lenahan Mowing Service out of River Falls for $55,600. As part of our budget request last fall, we were requested to keep the operating budget as the same for 2010 to 2011. The operating budget for 2010 was $40,600, so that leaves us about $15,000 short. I recommend that we keep the mowing services in-house. I think we can have better control dealing with weather issues and special events. I think we can have quality control. We can, at the same time, visually inspect other equipment, playground equipment, and other structures and things within the park. We also need mowers for non-compliance within the city and for foreclosure homes and things like that. I think we can have cost savings if the weather is dry and other events during the summer also. So, I would recommend that we proceed and let the public works do the mowing this year with the help of part-time workers.
I move to recommend performing mowing operations in 2011 for the city seasonal staff and to perform the work at a cost of up to $40,600 as budgeted.
Second.
Okay, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Update on project. Tom, I bet you have a bunch of stuff for us. Dennis, I was, Tom may have something also.
I was looking at Tom.
Yeah, sorry, Dennis.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to be here giving the first update of the projects for the season. Historically, these are projects that are under construction. Construction has started on a few projects. I'll start at the bottom of private developments. Two projects in Heritage Greens, Hudson Elder and Hudson Supportive. Hudson Elder has started putting in private utilities and building footings. And this morning, Mississippi Flats Development off O'Keefe, between O'Keefe and Emecoggin, started construction with sanitary sewer installation. And they've done some work on the site last week, too, so there's quite a bit of work going on out there right now. The projects on the, the public project, just listed those because those are projects that are upcoming, and there may be more that will be going through Public Works Committee. But these are just some projects that, working with Tom and giving assistance as needed, and we'll be bringing back more information.
I'd like to ask a question because it's becoming very, the biggest problem in the city right now is the condition of our streets, and a lot of people are talking about it. Is there, when is the next Public Works scheduled meeting?
May 3rd. Pushed back. Yeah, May 3rd.
Okay, can, at that time, we have them identified and bring them back to the roads that need the most help?
I'll be working with Tom. Tom, if you want to address some of that. This is probably the difference between idle maintenance and the larger maintenance.
We have contacted three different contractors, and we just have three different options or ideas currently. One is just to try to mudjack and level the concrete. Another one was using high-density foam, leveling them, taking the concrete cracks and whatever and rough those out, put epoxy sealer in those. Another option would be is to tear out basically the center of the intersection, put a better base in, and put, you know, asphalt in.
You're talking about Second and Vine.
I'm, sorry, yes.
What I'm asking at is an overall.
Or about overall projects.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What have you guys, or when you, when you guys meet next?
Okay.
Have this identified of what we're gonna do to fix the problems throughout the city. I mean, we obviously, we all know there's a big issue there, and prioritize, and let's see where we're at. So, we can go about it the best way, fix it.
I think that's been done already, hasn't it, or it?
We did do 2011, the road survey, it's called a Whistler Report. We did identify that, and with that, we take some of the roads that need mill and overlay, those fives and sixes, and we identified those roads. We have identified several roads that would be considered for this year. One would be Cooley Road from 11th toward Target. Gateway Boulevard by McDonald's and Target, or McDonald's and County Market. Menard's area would be another one. We're, Second Street, yes, is bad.
There's a lot of streets.
There's Hanley Road, there's Aspen Road. I just, I want to get a collective list of things, so we can identify it.
We have to make a decision if we want to do more of the thoroughfares first and then try to hold off on the residential areas. There's more roads that need mill and overlay than we have money for. So, I guess what we've been doing the last several years is trying to do the thoroughfares, such as the Cresview Drive, the Carmichael's Roads, and things like that. Cooley, Hagan Street last year, Cooley Road Bear Drive. So, we can certainly present the roads that need them, and we can make a decision at the, we'll make a recommendation at the Public Works Meeting.
I think the other concern that we have is probably asphalt's gone up 40% with the fuel, the cost of the oil. So, we may have, think we can do a lot, but if we have to afford. Dennis, have you heard any, any more on that as far as, I don't know if there's been any bids out yet. It's too early, I would think.
There's, there's been a few. The prices are still somewhat competitive.
Are they? Okay, well, that's good.
Just contractors are hungry.
Mary?
Have you, I know, Tom, we spoke about Grand View, and you suggested that we could possibly share with the county their, they have, you were talking to me about a spray technology that they have right now that they're using.
Most of the, and that's another issue, after looking at that, I think there's some structural stuff up on Grand View. You look at, I mean, it, the road is in pretty bad shape. But I think there's ways to do a maintenance on these less-travelled roads where we can maybe concentrate on the mill and overlays on our heavily-traveled roads. But you get a Grand View Drive, and we, maybe we can do more of a road maintenance project on that. Be a lot cheaper.
Have you checked with the county yet about being able to use their equipment?
We're talking back and forth on a lot of issues, and that'd be one of them, yes.
Okay, anything else? Okay.
Thanks.
Dennis, you have some more?
Just a couple, or just want to, Tom mentioned Second and Vine, and just getting several alternatives on that. And the last one was Wisconsin Street. I had sent a fairly wordy memo out on the status of that. But just the status needs to get the contract back to the, to the state to secure those funds. And then, the design can start with the state's, with that specific program, the Surface Transportation Program and the federal funds through WISDOT. Design money isn't even available till July of 2012 in their budget to start the design process.
Any questions? Any more? Dennis? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the new business agreement with Telecom Transportation Management, Inc., for the equipment on Hanley Road Water Tower.
Have you had a chance to review that? Yeah, I have. I guess I thought too, I think the representative, is Tim here?
No. Oh, here we go.
But I think this is Mr. Runkel, is it?
That's correct.
CTM.
My name's Dale Runkel, and I'm a contractor to Telecom Transport Management. We have provided approximately 300 sites in the Twin City metro area to connect all the cell sites into a fiber network to just give them more capacities at the site. Been working on the site for a number of months to get the location, get the plans approved by SEH, and then working on the agreement. And I think we're there except for the rider for the insurance.
Yeah, the last thing, I'm gonna do it on, I think, Thursday, and everything was there except the insurance certificate wasn't, didn't have everything. Now it does, and we just need a rider from the insurance company to add the additional insureds, the city and the water utility company. So, it's basically the utilities' standard contract with some modifications made because it's not an antenna. But substantively, SEH reviews that along with the Utility Commission. So, mine was just to make sure all the various exhibits and so forth were attached.
What's your pleasure, Council. Any questions? Do you want, we have a motion to approve?
I'll move that we approve the agreement with Telecom Transport Management for their equipment on the Hanley Road Water Tower.
Might just want to say, subject to receiving the rider required for insurance.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, communication and recommendations from the mayor. I'd like to get council approval to appoint Frank Rhodes to the Plan Commission from today's date, April 11, through the term of April of 2012.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? He's taking the place of Dave Selison, who resigned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Tom, we have a proclamation that I will, that I will read at this time. Whereas 2011 marks the 139th anniversary of Arbor Day in the United States and the 128th year of celebration by Wisconsin communities. And whereas trees are among Hudson's most beautiful natural resources and bestow fine opportunities for aesthetic appreciation and recreation, as well as improvements for our homes and our public lands and are indispensable in our ecological as providers of wildlife habitat, erosion control, air filters, noise inhibitors. And whereas City of Hudson has been named Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation in recognition of its outstanding efforts by the city and its residents to provide the legal basis, financial investment, and community participation to support an ongoing program to plant, nurture, and routinely maintain and restore their canopy of trees. And whereas the demands of our environment and our environmental resources necessitate an increased awareness of ecological values, as well as an individual commitment to the study and appreciation of trees and their maintenance. I therefore, now I therefore, I, Alan Birchell, do proclaim Saturday, April 30, as Arbor Day in the City of Hudson, and call upon citizens to participate in the Arbor Day celebration and continue to support and protect our trees and woodlands.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Do you have anything to add on that, Tom?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to just take a second to introduce Mr. Ken Holman. He's a member of our Urban Forestry Board, and Marie Nelson is also on our board. And to say that we are officially Tree City USA, and I'd like to present the mayor with the plaque that we can put proudly on our city.
Good job, Tom.
And hopefully, we'll have room for the, the signs. We're gonna, we're planning on putting some signs at different locations throughout our city, and hopefully, we'll have room to put the flags somewhere within the city and.
Well, I want to thank Tom and your committee for all their hard work.
And again, Arbor Day Celebration will be down in Lakefront Park, Saturday, April 30. We have a lot of activities, and we'll be planting a ceremonial tree just off to the side of the bandshell.
Thank you.
And.
As long as we're talking about trees, Tom, do you want to talk about our Buy-One-get-One-Free program, or don't you want to talk about that tonight? We're talking about Arbor Day. I think we can continue to, is that okay?
It's a part of Arbor Day.
Yes, it is. In fact, it is, isn't it?
Yes. We are, we did apply for a grant from the Rotary Club, and we did take some funding out of our operating budget this year, out of the forestry portion of our operating budget. And we're proposing that we'll take those funds, and if we have matching contributions from the public or anyone from the city, or who would like to donate a tree, we would have one, or we would match that with our fund so we can get double the trees out of that fund.
So, if there's any citizens or business that would like to donate a tree, we're happy to accept that money. About $125 a tree, is that what we're kind of the average?
That would be a good average.
And it's all kinds of trees. I think that's another question that's been asked.
The big thing that we've talked about in the urban forestry is that we have a diverse selection of trees. Last year, we planted about 65 trees last fall, and we had 13 different varieties, and we'll probably add a few more this year.
Okay.
So, thank you for the support. Appreciate it.
And we push the tree thing as far as we should push it. Good job, Tom. Good job, Tom. Tom, you had one other thing that you wanted to bring up.
No. Can I Google promo for that?
Sure, it's under Mayor, I'm still in communication from the mayor.
Is this what you're talking about?
Yes, I am.
We have Hudson, the Fire Department is hosting our annual Fire Department Pancake Breakfast this Sunday at 7:30 to 12 o'clock.
So, please all attend, right?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. I have nothing else. Any older person?
I would like to add to my future agenda, the term limits for council members.
Okay. Anyone else? City Attorney?
Nothing.
City Administrator?
I did provide everybody with a summary report from the election last week with turnout, and I'll get a copy to Randy. We were just under 26% citywide. The percentages range from 16 to 36, but that's a little skewed because, you know, the districts aren't even anymore. We'll be taking care of that during the districting. And just a reminder, the organizational meeting is a week from tomorrow, the 19th, 7 PM, for the council members.
Recall vote is tomorrow?
Recount.
Recount, excuse me. Recount.
Yes, we did have a petition filed in the 5th District for a recount. The Board of Canversons will be meeting here tomorrow, 9 AM. The public is, can attend. City Attorney will be, observed, correct. City Attorney will be here. The County Clerk will be here to help us, because she's done it with other municipalities, so, she'll be here in council chambers.
Okay. Anyone have anything else? Is our motion to adjourn?
I'm moving to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.